I'm going to call and order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District for today, Monday, March twenty first, two thousand twenty-two. Today's meeting is being held in the District Administration Building and live meetings through the future. Next on the agenda is the legislature allegiance in a moment of meditation. Please keep in your thoughts Frank Colman, father of our sixth grade teacher, Mr. Clark, and Stanley DeGraw, retired school bus driver in law.
My reading is to the flag of the administration of America, that is the role of which stands on a nation, on a ground, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Next on agenda is the Chair Report. The Board of Education acknowledges the Chair Report for January two thousand twenty-two. Next agenda is privilege on the floor. First up, we have Thomas Pogan.
How you doing?
Good evening.
Oh, good evening, everyone. My name is Thomas Pogan. I am here today to address my concerns about a recent incident that took place at the Goshen High School. With no, no names mentioned, one of your staff, a social studies teacher, took it upon himself to bully, intimidate, and embarrass a student in front of an entire class. Not, not only did he not belong in that classroom, but he did it twice in one day to the same child. This teacher did this to the point where the students and the teacher cried. This is not okay, and this is not acceptable. The employee has done this before, about a year before, for which he was suspended for three days with his record sealed, zero transparency. This equals to no more than a slap on the hand. Our, our kids cannot come to school feeling scared or intimidated, especially by the very same people that are supposed to make them feel safe and protected. This only makes me wonder how many other students has this bully affected? No one is perfect. We have to set boundaries and consequences for times like these. Unfortunately, trying to find out anything about the situation was not so transparent. It took a police report to start getting answers. It sure seems like the school district likes to protect their staff more than our kids. They do things behind closed doors as if this was Nancy Pelosi's office. This is about our kids' safety, and it can't be done without full transparency. The truth is, if this was a complaint about a student, this would have been resolved in thirty minutes after calling the parents. The school investigation is now completed and awaiting the board's decision, which I can only hope will set the right tone. Me being here today is not to undermine the patient sacrifice of so many other educators. The Goshen School District has so many that are doing the right thing. How I know? I hear it from my three kids that attend these schools on daily basis, the stories, the lessons, the smiles that come, that they come home with. Thank you for listening.
Appreciate you coming in today to express your concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Elizabeth Mated.
Good evening, everyone. I want to start off thanking the district for allowing me this opportunity to speak on behalf of not only my children, but all the children in our school district this evening. For those who don't know me, I'm a mother of eight children. I've been in the school district for the past seventeen years. We currently have at least one child in each of the school buildings. First off, I wanted to state clearly to all of you that I am fully aware that we are all, we've been living in unprecedented times. We have been told many things we can and cannot do throughout the pandemic. Guidelines change on a weekly basis. Being a mother of eight children and having a husband with diabetes, I made it to a point to reach out and speak with the health department often. Not only to make sure my family were safe, but we were all following those guidelines, sorry, guidelines to keep others safe as well. It was my understanding the school district followed the same guidance because that is what we've been told. Well, now, all that being said, why would I receive letters from our school district stating that authorities would be called because of excess absences regarding my children? Isolation and quarantines throughout the whole school year. We have followed every single rule the district has put out. We have had our children mask for almost two years, and guess what? They all still got COVID, wearing masks. My son was in kindergarten when this all started, and here we are in second grade, and guess what? He's behind in his learning. I hope each and every board member personally responsible for, for allowing these trunsee letters to go out to any family in this district. The superintendent, the assistant superintendent are clearly putting administrators in firing squad because parents are done with this nonsense. I honestly don't know how many of us can sleep at night these days. The one thing I did notice was about the district decided to send out surveys. Many people in our district doing the surveys didn't have anything on pupil personal services. Why is PPS not only holding Zoom meetings these days? Why aren't they having in-person meetings with parents? When it comes to our children, we should be able to attend in-person meetings and not feel forced to sit at a computer's desk and have to discuss our children. Why didn't the survey include those in the central office or those in the main street building? I'm guessing that the issues have to start at the top, and that's the way it looks to many parents. I would like to know what exactly you're going to do to support our school buildings. Where are all the much-needed aids for the buildings? What supports we have in place for the elementary schools that have fallen behind? I know my children are not the only one in elementary school levels that fall behind. We need aids desperately at Scottstown. We have a community. We are a community, and we see what's going on. It's time to make changes. It's time to put the students first. I appreciate a public response to all the questions in the next board meeting, and thank you for taking the time to listen to me and my concerns. And here's public letters that were sent out to trunsees as well as my speech.
Mr. Clark, please. Thank you. Next agenda is the president's report. Tonight, I'm going to, it'll be a budget presentation later. And we have an appointment, I think, who's here tonight. I'm going to move up new business into the president's report. Is that clear, everybody? I'm not going to, I'm going to start at number nine, actually. That way we can get this portion of the meeting out of the way before the presentation. So nine is the consent agenda. Any motion? Shannon, Allison. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented. All in favor? No old business, but a new business, eleven point one. Need a motion for the minutes. Chairman, Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the minutes for the March eighth, two thousand twenty-two regular board meeting. All in favor? Close. Eleven point two, may have an appointment. For Director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics. Mr. St. Lawrence is here tonight. Welcome.
Thank you.
Any motion? Chairman, Allison. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education appoints George State Lawrence as a Director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics at Goshen High School at a gross salary of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars effective July first, two thousand twenty-two, with a tenure date of July first, two thousand twenty-five, in a tenure area in Director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics. Mr. St. Lawrence has permanent school district leader, permanent school administrator supervisor, and permanent physical education certification. Mr. St. Lawrence is filling an open position. All in favor? Opposed? Want to say anything, or are you good?
Uh, I'd, I'd love to say one thing, if I may.
Sure.
Um, I'm very honored. Um, I'm excited, and I'm humbled by this appointment. Being a member of the Goshens District, having five children come through the district, and a resident since nineteen eighty-one, forty years in public education, I'm very, very excited about this position. I want to thank the superintendent of schools. I'd like to thank the school board members, and I'd like to thank the community of who I am part of to be able to give my services to the same town that I live in. I appreciate it. Thank you so much, everybody.
Eleven point three. Approve closing accounts in Goshen High School Extra Classroom Activity Fund. Any motion? Billy, Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the following accounts within Extra Classroom Activity Fund at Goshen High School be closed and that the remaining funds be transferred to other Extra Classroom Activity Fund accounts at Goshen High School as follows. Fund to close, the Hope Club, four hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents going to the Student Senate, same amount, four ninety-five, twenty-five. And the G Club, one ninety-nine, one hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents to the Student Senate, one hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents. All in favor? Close. Eleven point four. Need a motion to approve two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three annual meeting ballot proposition. Billy? Allison. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the following resolution to place proposition on the ballot at the annual vote and election on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. First proposition is going to be a capital reserve fund. And coincides with our capital project. The capital project is being funded by what is in our capital reserve fund, so capital reserve fund will be depleted with this capital project. So we need to start a new one, hopefully. Resolve, the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District be authorized to establish a capital reserve fund pursuant to section three, six, five, one of the New York Education Law to be known as the District Construction, Reconstruction, and Renovation Facilities Capital Reserve Fund two thousand twenty-two for a probable term of ten years and an ultimate amount of ten million dollars for the purpose of funding in whole or in part capital improvements to the facilities of the district, including, but not limited to, construction, reconstruction, and renovation of facilities and sites, with such funds to be transferred as available from end-of-year budget surplus known as unappropriated fund balance and interest accrued on such funds over a term of the capital reserve fund. Also, we have a capital project up for vote. Resolve shall be, shall the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District, Orange County, New York. Be authorized to construct heating, plumbing, ventilation, and air conditioning improvements, associated renovations related thereto, and roof restoration, roof replacement, and roof repair at the school district facilities, including original furnishings, equipment, machinery, apparatus, and ancillary or related site and other work required in connection therewith at a maximum estimated cost of nine million eighty-two thousand dollars, eighty-two thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars. Amount of five million shall be transferred from the District Construction, Reconstruction, and Renovation of Facilities Capital Reserve Fund two thousand nineteen to the capital fund for such purpose, and the four million eighty-two thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollar remainder will be funded from the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund Two, E S S E R Two, provided that the cost of the components of the project may be reallocated among such components if the Board of Education shall determine that such reallocation is in the best interest of the district. All in favor? Close. Eleven point five, the motion to approve two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three annual meeting notes. Chairman and Allison. Be resolved, the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District, Orange County, New York, hereby authorizes and directs the district clerk to give notice to the qualified voters of the school district of the annual public hearing on the budget and annual meeting school district election and vote in accordance with section two zero zero four of Education Law. All in favor? Close. Eleven point six, we have the approved audit engagement letter from Cooper Areas LLP. Any motion? Shannon? Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the Cooper Areas LLP engagement letter for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two risk assessment and monitoring services as presented. All in favor? Close. And eleven point seven, I need a motion to ratify stipulation of settlement and general release between the Goshen Central School District and employee zero three two one two two. Chairman? Allison. Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby ratifies the provisions of a stipulation of settlement and general release between the Goshen Central School District and employee number zero three two one two two dated March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, act presented to the board at this meeting. All in favor? Close. That is... Next agenda, we'll jump up to number six again, legislative update. Shannon? Shannon, good night. Thank you. Jump to number seven, superintendent's report. Dr. Kirk.
So as we are deep in our planning for the new budget for the new fiscal year, we'll be hearing presentations tonight from our Director of People Personnel Services for the proposed budget, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Director of Transportation. We've also invited Mr. Molnichl tonight to do us an update on the stance of the food service budget. Again, the food service budget, as we all know, operates separate and aside. It is a self-contained budget. Mr. Molnichl is going to give us an update on where we stand, and then a look forward as well. So without further ado, I'm going to invite Mrs. Henderson up to get us started.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to present the budget for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Before I get started with the specific line items, I just want to just shift our focus to the middle column, the not funded, defunded, um, area. There are many variables that impact the people personnel budgets, two of them being our enrollment and tuition. So I thought I would just take a few minutes to talk about the population of our students who fall beneath the people personnel, um, umbrella. Currently, our population of students with disabilities, five oh four students, and our multilingual students continues to grow. As of March first, we've had fifty-nine students who've transferred into our district who've been identified as requiring support, and our multilingual learner population has remained steady at a hundred and twenty-one students this year. Despite some of our enrollment decreasing in general as a district, our PPS students continue to remain pretty steady. As we go through the budget that I'm presenting this evening, there's a few factors that I think we need to just be cognizant of. The needs of the students are changing within the PPS department. We've seen a rise in our students who've been struggling socially and emotionally since the onset of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. We found that general ed, education, and special education students have been accessing the services of the school social workers, the school psychologists, and guidance counselors at a higher rate. We've noticed that some of our students have struggled with the transition back to the academic setting after either interrupted or modified instruction caused by the pandemic. And prior to the pandemic, we had noticed a rise in the number of students who were demonstrating weaknesses in early literacy skills such as phonemic awareness, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. We've been changing the delivery of our instruction to match the continuum of services the district currently offers. We have four teachers at Scottstown who are currently working towards their Level One certification in Orton-Gillingham. We have three teachers at the Middle and High School who've received training in the Read One Eighty System Forty-four program, as well as there's been embedded training within the classrooms to support management behavioral needs at Scottstown, GIS, and the middle school. So as I go through each line item, we'll be talking about the populations that will be addressed and how their needs are being met within the PPS budget. So our first line is our supply line. And this area includes our mandated IEP five oh four testing kits, publications for related services, and classroom curricular supplies needed to implement the IEP and five oh four services, as well as Part One Fifty-four of the regulations which includes our multilingual learners. These supplies are required to be able to continue with our supplemental curriculum, our foundations, Orton-Gillingham, the Wilson Reading Program, Read One Eighty, Handwriting Without Tears. It also includes our health office supplies that are required for screenings. Additionally, we have started a, to promote our college and career readiness for our students. We've enhanced that, uh, that program by including transition folders for students in grade seven through twelve. So what these folders are, it maps out our post-secondary plans and our measurable goals to address transition that begins in grade seven with student interest inventories as well as, uh, career interests, and we track that from seventh grade up through high school. The folder follows them with their guidance counselor through their grades, so that when they get to the high school level, we're taking a look at what their interests are, electives, working closely with guidance to be able to plan and map out what their educational plan is for their time in the high school, but also looking beyond the high school as well to see how we can address and meet their goals when they leave high school. Additionally, uh, what we're looking to add this coming school year is executive functioning planners for students. I know that, um, at the last board meeting, there had been some discussion about the electronic use of planners. For some of our students within the PPS department, we're finding that they require that tactile modality. They need something that they have in their hand. They need to be able to use a paper and pencil task in order to activate multiple areas of the brain which assist with memory, short-term, long-term memory. And executive functioning takes a look at the processes that are required to plan, to focus attention, to remember instruction that is presented, and to multitask. So all of these things we're not born with. They need to be developed. So as we shift a part of our focus to this area, we're looking to add these planners to be able to assist students who are having a great deal of difficulty with their organizational skills, their long-term, short-term assignments, so that we can support them throughout the school year. Additionally, this line item includes our basic supplies for the copier, copying the plans, and mailings that we send out to our parents. So with our programs that we have, that we have consumables and things of that nature that fall under these supplies, as we continue to have staff members who are participating in... in professional development in the area of reading and math, funding for resources to implement these programs may increase. We're also continuing to enhance our evaluation process to include a cross-battery approach. So we are always looking at alternative assessments that we can review and purchase to address the changing needs of our population. And as I mentioned before, we'll continue to provide supplies to sustain the programs we currently use, for example, the Handwriting Without Tears, the IREES System Forty-four, REE180, foundations, Wilson, and Orton-Gillingham Touch Math, and the Healthy Relationships curriculum. As we move down, one of our next lines that is pretty significant within our budget is our contractual line, and this line includes contracted services that directly support students. So for example, mandated IEP five oh four related services, occupational therapy, physical therapy. We also utilize the services of a board certified behavioral analyst to provide behavioral services to our teachers and classrooms. This also includes any nursing services that are required, any assistive technology, professional development that's required, as well as any evaluations outside the standard battery of the CSD that either the CSD or five oh four committee may recommend to help us determine whether or not a student has a disability. Within this contractual line also includes our home and hospital instruction. And when it comes to our curriculum, our supplemental curriculum that we purchase, the PPS department uses a data-conscious approach with regard to the supplemental curriculum. So we're always looking for programs that are going to meet the needs of our students, but also that are going to be able to provide our staff with the support to ensure that the programs are implemented with fidelity. So we have found to be very successful is we may start with a supplemental program which would involve teachers attending maybe a two-day training, but then we're also having that embedded coaching throughout the school year where the person who provided that training will actually go into the classroom, so the teachers are receiving that live training and support in real time with the students within their classrooms. We find that to be very effective as far as keeping the fidelity of the programs, and we've seen some nice student gains as a result. Additionally, we continue to provide professional development to our special education teachers and psychologists and related service providers with relationship to the professional development that's offered, that's aligned to the testing that they give. We continue to provide that. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we've been looking at executive functioning. So last year, we were able to have two of our speech-language pathologists trained in this area. They received professional development because there is some overlap of what they do that aligns with executive functioning. This year, we've had all of our speech-language pathologists trained, as well as three teachers who've been trained as well, that we're looking to provide support to our students, but also as a resource to the buildings as part of their RTI pre-referral interventions that are put in place for general education students within the school setting. As far as looking forward in the area of our contractual lines, our department's approach is to continue to support our staff members who have participated in specially-designed or evidence-based multisensory approaches to reading such as Orton-Gillingham and Wilson. As I mentioned before, we have staff members who are currently pursuing their level-one certification in Orton-Gillingham. We also have teachers who've been certified in Wilson level one, so we're continuing to support them to continue on to the level-two certifications. Additionally, we're looking at restructuring of our learning labs at the middle and high school to incorporate some of the executive functioning skills, to address the working memory, to help the students become more organized, and to be able to participate fully within academic setting. So we're looking to provide support as far as note-taking, anecdotal notes, but then also that content support as well. So it'll be a combination of both the executive functioning and content-level support. We're also looking to continue our training with the Westchester Institute of Human Development. We've accessed them to provide us support in training for assistive technology, as well as parent training. Prior to COVID, we were a site where they would come and provide training for parents to increase involvement, to give information as far as community supports and supports that are available to parents and students with disabilities. They're beginning to do more in-person trainings and are looking to get back into that now that there have been some restrictions that have been lifted. Additionally, as I mentioned before, we are seeing a need for social-emotional support for our students. I think we may be into our third year, we've been on a waiting list with the Office of Mental Health to have satellites within our buildings to provide support that would provide support to the parents, students, directly through the Office of Mental Health. We have moved along on the list, so we're just waiting for a few things to come into place where they'll be able to come in and we'll be able to start those programs. Additionally, we're always looking to enhance and create trauma-sensitive environments with a heavy emphasis on verbal de-escalation techniques and coping strategies. So looking at therapeutic crisis intervention or the Crisis Prevention Institute, we currently use the Handle With Care model, but we're looking to have something that has a more, it's more robust in the area of verbal de-escalation. As we move down our textbook line items, the department continues to use supplemental textbooks that are aligned to the Common Core learning standards and are at a readability level that allows students to be able to access the content of the curriculum while removing reading and language barriers. We're continuing to find additional supplemental resources, especially at the high school level, to assist students with gaining full access to the region's curriculum. We're also looking to expand some of our resources that are available to our multilingual learners and students with disabilities at the middle and intermediate levels. We'd like to take a look at our classroom libraries and have them include more high-interest, low-readability-level, age-appropriate classroom libraries for our special education classes, but also include the high-interest grade level and beyond-grade level, age-appropriate libraries for our students as well. In our equipment area, we work closely with our technology department to ensure that our equipment that we utilize is supported by our platforms. This area includes assistive technology devices, which may include a piece of equipment, product system, and maybe something that we find at a store that we modify or customize so that we're able to increase, maintain, and improve the functional capabilities of students with disabilities. This also includes any mobility devices such as walkers, wheelchairs, hardware, and peripherals that will assist students with disabilities in accessing computers or other informational technologies. We currently, as I mentioned, work with the Westchester Institute of Human Development, so all of the assistive technology that we recommend is tied to an assistive technology evaluation. Our equipment, specifically our FM systems, iPads, and Chromebooks, we're getting on the tail end of their life expectancy, so moving forward, we are replacing equipment as they are either becoming outdated or broken and need to be replaced. We're also looking, as far as the PPS office, looking to incorporate a swipe card system for access to people personnel, as well as having a camera with the doorbell as well so we are able to see the visitors who are at our door. And finally, as I mentioned earlier, tuition can play, is a huge variable when it comes to our PPS budget. We currently have out-of-district tuitions that include placements in approved private schools. It's anticipated that going into next year, we'll have two students in residential placements with six students that will be attending day placements such as Green Chimneys, Caplin Career Academy. We also have students who attend Orange and Rockland, uh, Orange and Rockland Bosse's. They attend center base programs as well as satellite programs. There are satellites offered in the Minnesick District, the Warwick District, as well as Rockland County has some satellite programs as well. It's anticipated, right now we have fifty-six students attending these programs. It's anticipated, unless we have more transfer students come in, that that number will remain relatively the same. It's also noteworthy that since the beginning of the year, as I mentioned, we had that high number of transfer students. We also had seven students who transferred in who came from out-of-district placements, which accounted for the increase in that tuition line item for the projected school year. When we look to have our transferred students come to us, when they come to us, we're always looking and we have to consider the least restricted, least restrictive environment. And over the past five years, we've been able to have twelve students who've returned to our in-district placements, who've remained here in district. And looking towards the future, as the need arises, we may wish to consider expanding our continuum of services to provide additional opportunities for students to receive their education within the district. I believe it was the year before the pandemic, we had opened the behavior, social-emotional learning class at Scothtown Elementary. So as we continue to review the needs of our students, we may want to take a look at who else we can program for within the district. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Karen?
Can I just ask, roughly, how many special education teachers do you have that are already trained in Orton-Gillingham and Wilson?
So right now, we have one staff member who is a language therapist, which is the highest level of Orton-Gillingham, and then we have the teachers that I mentioned that are currently going through their training.
Those four.
Those four, and then we have one teacher who is level-two Wilson certified, and then we have the, there are three teachers who completed their level-one Wilson certification and are looking to hopefully continue.
And what those teachers who are delivering the OG, are they delivering it daily to those students? So is it...
Yes, we have resource rooms that are available, so we have students who are receiving that daily. Both the Wilson and your...
Can I ask you about the executive function planners? Are those just typical planners or are they specific to students with executive function?
Sure. So as I mentioned, we had staff members who went to training with Sarah Ward, which was phenomenal, and so the, we had a bunch of planners that she had suggested, so we went through it with the staff members of what we felt would be appropriate at the middle and high school level. So we had ordered two different sets of planners based upon that training or staff member.
Are they using them already?
We had purchased some to trial this year, and we have had students who've been using them at the middle school, and it's been met with success.
That's great.
Mm-hmm. Karen here?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Michelle.
Freeze. Moving right up to the fiscal. I want to make notes, the board as well, in your packet tonight is an updated draft of the line item budget reflective of your directive from our last made of the budget. We've made some adjustments to get it to zero percent on eleven. Obviously, this is still in draft format, we're still working through a couple of different items, but Mr. London and I worked together to get it to the zero percent as requested by the board. Freeze, when you're ready, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Coats. Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to present tonight. I think to date, we've heard from our principals of our buildings and director of people personnel services about some wonderful things that we're doing with education. So all the education assets in our buildings, about five hundred and fifty thousand square feet, hundred and twenty-six acres, and we have an insurable value of about just shy of two hundred and ninety million. So with that, we operate and maintain the building so that our children can realize their dreams and their educational aspirations, and we can all come and do the good work that we do for the children. So tonight, I've worked with Dr. Coats and Rick London to prepare a fiscally responsible budget to operate and maintain the buildings, and I'd like to walk you through that. Next to staffing, the biggest expense that we have in our budget is utilities. This covers heating, fuel, electricity, telephone and fiber service, and water and sewer. One of the things that we're working on is we have about eleven Orange and Rockland accounts, and there's a few of them, I'm thinking upwards of four, but we've attacked two so far that we don't need anymore, so I'm trying to just close those accounts. And it's a little more difficult than you might think, but just trying to get somebody on the phone is difficult. Anyway, we're trying to just clean up our, clean up our expenses and what we're paying on so that we can consolidate the money into repairs and maintenance. In the future, we need to watch carefully where energy prices are adding. That's anyone's wild guess right now. I have a call into our paid utility consultant, EPACs, and I'm thinking that not even they know where things are headed right now, but that is something that we have to just keep in mind. Supplies, so this area includes custodial supplies, building maintenance supplies, then includes filters, steam traps, valves we use for heating and cooling, lighting, et cetera, grounds and field supplies, including paint and other soil conditioners, vehicle and equipment Specifically in the budget, we're focusing on replacing deteriorated secondary doors. You might notice the boiler room door here where they begin to corrode at the bottom over years of using de-icing salts. So we just need to go through and replace those in to keep our building envelope sealed. And then we're beginning the conversion from fluorescent LED lighting. I think my predecessor, Mr. Riley, has done quite a bit of that already with parking lots in the large areas like the gymnasiums and cafeterias. What we'd like to do is continue that effort to go forward with hallway lighting and begin in the classrooms. Future considerations is that we can do that on a larger scale as we can afford. Let me just mention that today I paid a bill where we did receive a three hundred dollar credit, Monterey Rockland, for the purchase of LED bulbs. So we're spending money but also getting some rebates as well. And that's a credit to Justin Bush, our maintenance mechanic. And then the other thing we have that we're keeping in mind is there's a new law that was passed regarding the lead and water, where they want to lower the action level from fifteen parts per billion down to five. I believe that we're on a three-year test cycle at this point, but between now and the next three years, we're going to need to achieve that, and myself and Mr. Qualecheck and our staff are looking into how many fixtures, based on our last inspection, that might, that might affect. And we're starting to be proactive by starting to replace these faucets sooner than later, and to do it under a operating line rather than come to the board and say we need sixty thousand dollars for faucets, for example. And then we have contractual items, and this area includes service contracts for elevator, fire alarm systems, or building automation system. our building automation system, oil tank servicing, fire sprinkler, hood suppression testing, contractors for repairs for roofing and repairs for mechanical systems and equipment, and compliance services. So every summer, we have to bring in contractors to test and inspect a lot of our systems. That includes fire alarm devices, fire sprinkler system in this building, fire extinguishers, gym and door equipment, the electronic motorized partitions in the gymnasium, kitchen hood cleaning, elevator inspections, backflow prevention device testing, making sure our theater curtains are fire rated, et cetera. We also have facility maintenance. So what's included this year is parking lot maintenance. Last year, as you recall, the seal-coated GIS. And this year, we're slated to seal coat the high school and re-strip the high school. The other lots, such as this one, will be crack filled where the cracks open up, do the freeze-staw cycle in the winter. Also, our gym equipment needs to be serviced. There's some repairs that need to be done, particularly in the bleachers. And then there's also some light safety repairs on the fire alarm system, most notably in the high school from the old system that was replaced of course, in two thousand and eighteen, Friday. We need to remove some of those devices. Not funded, I was happy that our staff worked well to pre-locate the contents that were in forest storage containers at the high school that since have been removed. And we no longer need to pay the rental on those. Future considerations, so there's some areas behind the bus garage that need to be resurfaced. Pathways behind Scotstown Avenue and Bochum Intermediate School need to be resurfaced. Installation of a high school P A lockdown system. Maintenance on Scotstown Avenue detention pond that's the runoff coming along Scotstown Avenue gets silted over over time. It affects the basements of the folks living across the street. And we just need to clean that out. There's been some requests for R C D baseball and softball dugout structures in our high school fields. Our building automation system, they notified that they no longer can support the existing platform that we're on. We need to migrate all of our systems to an in-floor control platform. We're looking to resurface C J Hooker's parking lot. We need to do some fencing, replace some fencing we took down last summer. Make some fencing repairs. There's a fellow neighbor across the street that was a tree and a fence on our property that needs repair. And we'd like to install motorized backboard lifts. Right now, we have the old hand crank, so every time a group wants to use our gym, then we need to lift the backboard nets. It's a correct operation instead of a motor. We've had a full level of hydraulic fluid in our Bochum Intermediate School elevator pit. So there's two elevator shafts there, this elevator A. And then there's quite a bit of, as I mentioned, last year at this time in my presentation, we're working to take every available amount of running we have to work on our classroom environment and change, remove some of the asbestos flooring and replace the flooring and upgrade some of the classroom, classroom environment. And then the last item on the list is equipment. Apparently, we're looking at the vehicle replacements that we use, the buildings and grounds, to a ten to twelve-year cycle. I think we're a little bit beyond that now, but we're trying to catch up. I think between two thousand and nineteen and this year, COVID got in the way and I don't think any vehicles have been ordered in that period. But this year, we were able to order two. I don't know when we'll see them, such an attack order, but also for years, we've been leasing a loader that we use. You might see it sitting outside by the bus garage up on the hill. It has the pusher attached to it. So we've rented that every year for four to five months to help with some snow removal. At a significant cost of about sixteen thousand dollars. And this year, I've worked with Dr. Coats and Mr. London to see if we can find some funds to purchase one where we have it available for us all year round and not just five months. And we think that that would be a good solution. So after the expense this year, the sixteen thousand that we spend every year will become available again, hopefully to spend on the classroom, classroom repairs. So some of the items that I mentioned before, next to contractual, like the resurfacing of the bus garage and pathways and C J Hooker and migrating to the in-floor platform, and installation of a P A lockdown system. Those are very expensive items. And I really think that Dr. Coats and Rick London have put forth some great ideas, thinking outside the box, that I completely and overwhelmingly agree with, to address those capital projects, or project work that I'll call it, that are things that I can handle in-house, that we don't need, you know, complete project to go outside to voters for. And so I think the three million dollar item to transfer capital that was included in the budget is very good. And also the transfer to reserve for capital projects is a very positive step in order to help us continue to work with the board and the community to keep our taxes stable and reasonable. With that, I'll say that I concluded. But I'm willing to talk to you about anything that comes to mind.
One question I had, I think we talked about it in the walkthrough, that is when we did the sidewalk, we took down that fence on the side of S A S, which to me is concerning. Is that something that we're addressing this round?
So I had money here, Mark, for the fence. The issue was, if you look a little further in, there's a stream and there's a construction fence around a inlet, a drainage inlet. And I've been looking to address that stream. And just recently, I've talked to Dr. Coats about using the services of Land Associates to help me talk to the Department of Environmental Conservation about what we can do with that. I think that can be, the stream can be put into a pipe released up into the wood line. You can have more of a swell there, then whole lot of property then becomes available for the use of our Scotstown Avenue students. I think if we arbitrarily put the fence back up where it was prior, I think that fence has been there, years I can tell from the drawings, I think that fence has been there at the time that Scotstown Avenue School was built. And I just, in my, just put a fence back where it didn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to me if there's a fence there and have the kids try to cross a stream. It didn't make sense. I just wanted to see if I could fix that or maybe move the fence to the other side of the stream. So that it, you know, you might look and see where the fence comes down. But I understand, you know, your concern. And it's something we're going to address.
Okay. Do we get back, do we get back to the content? What, how we're gonna do or what land says or?
Well, so just for clarity, the money's there. He has the funds available to do the fence. And we just don't want to put the fence up, move the fence again. If land wishes an opportunity to address the drainage.
Okay.
Second question I have is contractual. Do we have our fuel, our gas in particular, is that contracted through the state? We're in a state contract? Is that hedged at all or how's that? How's our gas purchases work?
I think it's purchased the same way that you would purchase gas for your house. We purchase through our local utility.
No, our preferred vehicles and stuff like that, that transportation?
In fact, there's some transportation. Karen's knows our question.
I gave you a preview. I like your product. I only gave you a pair of previews.
You know one question.
That's all I got.
You don't have to answer now. This is just what popped in my head is solar energy. And if there's anything that we can look at for that, because Gil is not going to. And then obviously grants, energy programs, credits, anything like that regards to, you know, Orton Rockland. I mean, it may be absolutely not worth it because he has a homeowner. I've been looking at those things and there's really nothing available, so that's just what popped in my head.
So those are great, great, great topics. And I agree with, I agree with both of them that I think solar can be of benefit to the district, but I think we need to address some of our roofs first. I don't think we have land to be putting solar panels on that, you know, they're mostly used for athletic fields and athletics, but they need to go on our roofs. And once our roofs are fixed, I think that we'll get right to that solar question. And I think that'll have a great benefit to the district in terms of reducing the cost of electricity. And then, of course, those funds get freed up to do a little bit more in the classrooms and removing asbestos and flooring and in terms of rebates, I think that we're, the more we can convert these fluorescent tubes to LED. So these are twenty-eight watts, thirty-two watts. We put in an LED bulb that's less than half of the usage. A big part of the bill just goes to pay the supply of the energy. And there's a smaller part that is the actual energy cost. But we can reduce that actual energy cost through our efforts, just by coming to work every day and doing the work that we do and using the money that you're funding us to replace these bulbs. We replace them anyway when we fail. So let's replace them with LED, let's say it costs a little more. But as I mentioned earlier, our, our staff has been diligent in getting rebates and everything that we can from our electric company for those bulbs.
So when you're changing the lights, are you just changing the bulbs, not the fixtures themselves?
At this point, yes, where it makes sense to. That's the cheapest step of approach. But there are areas where we need to replace the fixture. For example, if you walk into C J Hooker, you look at the hallway, we have surface mount fixtures that are like wooden case. They're not reflector fixtures and they don't match anything in the building. Perhaps we can get something that's a little more actually pleasing, because that's also an LED. So we're kind of looking at everything. We really want, you know, we want our students, we want our staff to walk in and be comfortable, to get out of their car, not having to step on the pedal, to getting in the building, to being able to have a classroom that's conducive to the learning environment.
Thank you, Gil.
Thank you.
What else?
Well, everyone, you know, what am I questioning? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my voice in a much presentation. Mine is going to be totally basic. Okay, we start with the supply line and pretty much it's just stuff that you would expect. We need diesel, we need gas to run the buses. We need oil moving filters, tires, tools, bus parts, the basic office supplies. We do need to buy D V R books. That is the daily record report books that have to be in every bus. That's a D O T requirement. We need safety training materials, especially when we're bringing on new hires, because now they're being federal mandated for the training that we have to do for new drivers. Training supplies for the buses. And we do stock paper tools, parking manuals, especially now that we're starting to do them on field trips. The not funded or defunded are the calendar pocket datebooks that we use to hand out to all the drivers, because now everybody just puts everything in their phone, so they don't even bother using them. We also have the postcards and the postage that we use to send out every year for the parents, you know, their child schedule. I mentioned that on the topic. With contractual, we have coaster transportation. We have the busing for the added district special needs students that we have to provide transportation for. We do that through the coaster service. We have BOCES transportation. We have the auto insurance for all the district operated vehicles. Computer services, we have Transliner, that is our routing software program. And this year, we're going to stop what is called Stop Finder. That works with that program so that we would be able to provide the information that we put out to the parents with the student schedule. We have a Fuel Master that monitors the usage of fuel. And we also have contracts with partners in safety for the pre-employment physicals and drug spray program that we have and mandatory brand and drug testing that we have. The contractuals are just basic utilities, the water, sewer, refuse, gas, heating, electric pump, uniforms, and rugs. Equipment, we're looking to purchase new buses this year, big large buses and free wheelchair accessible buses. These buses that we're going to purchase this year, the big buses, are, we're looking to get gas buses, because gas motors are cheaper to begin with. You will save on gas instead of diesel, because that gas is cheaper. There's cost savings. You don't have to use the gas for those, which is required when you have a diesel unit. The oil changes, there's a lot less oil that you have to deal with in oil change with a gas bus versus a diesel bus. The new diesel buses are about eighteen quarts with oil change and the gas buses are about eight. The filters are more expensive on a diesel bus. And there's also the added that you have to have, that we get put in our bill tanks with every delivery that we have. For the future, we are looking to look towards electric buses, because come two thousand and thirty-two, the government is looking to have every bus now being electric. That's actually the one you have, but we have to start looking at that. I know there's going to have to be major upgrades to the infrastructure to support that. Grays are available. I have an intention of doing some of the grants, especially if you take some of the old units, like what we have that we just put out the bid. If you destroy that, you can get that money back towards the purchase of the bus. We're also looking to upgrade our bus radios, because the current radio system that we have is antiquated. It's unsafe. But I'm looking to do the whole fleet. I don't need just four or five radios, I need every bus to be replaced. I have gotten prices with that. The lease program looks fairly good. They will replace every bus radio. They do the maintenance program for it. It includes the unlimited access to the regional tower, which will give us a much greater area to reach the drivers. Because as it stands right now, with some of the buses that we have, they can't even get outside of town. We can't reach them on the radios, just because the antenna that we have was put in many years ago and trees grow and buildings get erected and gets in the way of the transmission. So we really need to improve the radio communication for the safety of students. And that about sums it up for me. If you have any questions, if you have.
I'm going to go right back to the first question. Or first question when we were previous to presenting?
Okay, our first question. Our gas is purchased with a contract date, with a state contract.
Through state. And that period lasts, how long does it, daily price or is it?
I can get more information on how it's been going up. It came up a little bit, but not what we need to save the company with on deal. I know we did increase the price that we were I know we did increase the price that we were looking at for next year. Yeah, 425 for gas and 475.
I believe, I believe it's a quarterly assessment. Opened added almost a dollar to each.
And my second question is, I think I had part of electric buses a few years ago. Looking into it, I think you looked into it, you looked into it. The problem is the initial infrastructure upgrade, right?
Right, but there are grades that you can get for that too, to assist with that.
So it's one, Karen, Mr. Carter and I had a very good conversation on this the other day. We actually went to the garage to do a site visit. One of the things we have to contemplate long term, if this is going to happen, what major changes need to happen to the facility as it stands to be able to accommodate those buses? And right now, the buses are bigger than they were when we first constructed the garage. The bus almost doesn't fit in the service bay now, so we need to look at the facility itself. One of the other things, I've been to several trainings on the electric buses, as Karen. Once you establish your electrical network infrastructure to accommodate for these buses, every training that all of us have been to say, wherever you put it, that's where you're going to leave it. Because it's exceptionally costly. Number one to install, but number two, you don't want to have to move it at the same time. So we have to question whether or not, if this is truly a matter that's going to happen, is the current transportation hub where we have it appropriate to meet the needs? Well, so Senator Martucci, who obviously has a strong relationship with quality, oh, quality of transportation. He was very clear the last time I brought this up in one of our meetings. Don't be married to the timeline that you're hearing. The cost of the vehicle itself is a prohibitive factor that the state knows has to be addressed before we can go in this direction. It's almost four times the cost of a regular fuel bus right now. It's just not possible for municipalities to be able to sort of, whether they're a private contractor or a school district. It's nice to be able to buy one or two, which school districts have done, but to re-outfit your whole fleet, it's not a reality.
And they still have to work on the range of buses. Because you can't just replace everything that you have and still plan on doing field trips. It's just not going to work.
Plus two, some of the roads, you can't, these buses are heavy.
Well, that was one of the other things they talked about is the battery packs, right? They're very, very heavy.
Weight limits on.
Right, so the weight limits.
There might be some that would actually push you over, but a regular bus you're looking at now is 31,000 pounds.
How many are in our fleet? How many buses do we have?
Nine.
So with this current timeline, have we started to think like at what point do we need to start thinking about phasing in?
Well, we need to know what the timeline is first. We, they, they used artificially a date in 2032.
No, we're in 2027.
Twenty, she tried in her executive budget question, essentially. The governor articulated in her executive budget proposal this year, moving that up to 2027. There's a cost issue and they know, and they know that. We need to start thinking about it and talking about it now. Could we buy one or two with a very crude installation of electric? We could, but is that really the right thing rather than thinking globally about what is the need of the transportation fleet to be able to do this properly? We want to really sort of plan for this, engage with our architect, think about the facility itself, think about the footprint of the property that we have up there to make sure that if this is something that's going to happen, we can do so properly. It's not going to be easy.
It's also tricky, I think from a board's point of view or a fiscal point of view. I think it's a, it's a tough scenario because it has transportation change from the parent point of view. Or allocating so much money until you're out there driving your kids away. So it's kind of tough to allocate that much money or it can be allocated to other parts of the budget.
I was just going to ask about the cost of the upgraded, like the radio systems we were talking about. It's in there?
It's supposed to give you, it's a 16 month all-inclusive program on one page and then it gives you buying and outright. Buying and outright is a little bit more scary looking at the numbers. But with the lease program, at least they're providing more benefits to it. They're giving you the option of, you know, if something happens, say if you go down the road and a tree branch takes off one of the antennas, they will announce a threat without a problem. They will be yearly upgrades if you get. If they have, if you get a new bus and we need to have a radio taken, add an older bus and put in a new bus, they'll help you do that as well. And that's all included in the price. If you buy it outright, everything else is extra.
Well, it's a monthly lease. First and annuals.
They break it down on here, so it gives you all of, because it separates it like the 90 Motorola radios. Then it gives you the radio that we have, that we need one in our mechanic's bay. We need one that is in our office that we split between our secretary and dispatcher. We need, we're actually in the pan, held one for myself and my assistant director.
Do you want to copy that and get the marine or send that to board?
I have a copy of this one.
Thank you. Any other question? Thank you. You're welcome.
Again, just to transition now from Mr. Mullin, I hope it isn't. The last couple of years have financially and fiscally been quite a challenge for the Food Service Department. Mr. Mullin, we're working to try to right the ship, if you will, to get the program fiscally solid. Again, there are many different challenges on ahead, but to keep in mind that the Food Service Department is supposed to be a self-funded organization. We need to look at how that operates moving forward. What does that look like with some of the potential changes that are going to be coming from the federal government last year potentially moving into the new year? So without further ado, sir, I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon. We're now for something completely different. I took where we're at, took where we'd be if we were completely free or if we remove back to the old way, the free reduced pay, we had to collect applications and go back to, we were pre-pandemic. So our expenses are up about 2%. If anybody's going to the grocery store, you've seen the same price increases I have. It's hard to even find types. I can't find General Bill's cereals. I can't find a lot of things that we would normally have on a regular basis. So we're hunting a lot, serving what we can get, using what we can get. Couple of years ago, the board, we agreed on a 10% increase in the meal price. We went to those nice paper trays. You can't even buy them. We're using whatever we can find basically in the local market. There have been days where we cut, take out containers in half and used the top on one day and the bottom on another to serve children because we weren't even sure the truck would come in the next day with our new load supply. It's been a very interesting, interesting couple of years. So back to the budget. The most recent federal appropriations bill that passed the Congress did not include funding for everyone to eat. My assumption is we will move it back to pre-pandemic numbers, serving less children, having to charge parents and go to the free and reduced paid model of service for our students. With me too, a few issues. We're serving now 300 more children a day at lunch and more at breakfast just because everyone's free. So those numbers presumably will drop back to numbers from what they were before. We're projecting a loss of about $113 if all things being. The cost just ended up more than we've ever faced in my life. Revenue projections also have worked in a price increase of 35 cents a meal. Now, I've only asked for a quarter meal price increase once in 25 years. And to sit here and even think about a 35 cent increase and we're still $113,000 short is kind of mind-boggling to me. It's not going to be an easy year, but when you're working on a budget that has to be self-sustaining, you only have certain options. You either raise revenue, you cut costs, or you find new revenue sources. There is no other option. To do that is probably going to be all free. We're going to continue to find new revenue sources, whether it be vending. There's a new program, fairly new program out to New York State called the New York 30. If we can spend 30% of our revenue on New York products, they'll give me 19 cents a meal. Of course, it's a catch. You get it in later years. You have to spend it now to get it in '23, '24, but there's always a catch. But we're going to try for that. We're going to try for a grant. I'm writing a grant, it's due by the end of the month for equipment. I'm trying to replace a cooler at the middle school. The age of that thing is undetermined, probably from the 60s. I can see pictures of metalware that's an inch and a half on the door hinges. But even the equipment lying in here, the $40,000 is more for emergencies. If a dishwasher goes down or something and I have to buy something quickly, it's in the budget, but I haven't spent that $40,000 in years. I just haven't had the ability to replace coolers or walk-ins or freezers or... I can't even pay sick days or sixty percent on my clothes. They don't get sick time, they don't get personal days, there's no days. They still come to work and work their butt up. So the last time we increased meal prices is the 18, 19 school year. So suggesting to the board, we raise both breakfast and lunch next year, not 35 cents each. I'm going to try to be as judicious as possible because there's a lot of diminishing returns. The higher you go up, obviously less people buy. This is natural. But with what we're facing, kind of out of.
Do you forecast here with 35 cents in it already?
Yes.
And how many meals, how many meals are you doing?
This year, I think we're going to hit 290,000 a month. Typically, pre-pandemic, we were the 240, 250,000, 450,000 meal range.
How much is a meal? How much is a lunch?
285. That'll bring in about 70,000 a month. So I'm going to have to find cost savings in the expenditure part. I can't, we're on the deficit, I don't have a bank account. The pandemic wiped out any and all savings we had. We used it in the 18, no, sorry, 19, 20 school year. And then last year, the district had to supplement my budget, close to half a million dollars. And this is not sustainable.
How much at the 250? Were you budgeting 250? What are you budgeting? How many meals are you budgeting for next year?
263 is what I averaged out. I'm praying for a few more to show up.
And how many, what percentage do I have to pay 285?
Oh. 169,000. Our frame produce percentage is up slightly. We're up to 29%, close to 30% of our kids now, followed by the frame reduced meals. Does that help us a little?
And that's position of the trend of the economy?
No. But we'll start that way and through September, it will be that way.
They hiccups been that when the FDA qualified everyone to have a free meal for this year, that they didn't have to file the forms unless they were going to seek benefits on the outside of the school. So if it trends back to what Al's describing, that everyone will have to re-qualify for next year, it could be a complete reset of how many we're going to have on free meals. That's greatly undetermined at this point.
And do you get reimbursed this same?
Generally, it goes up to one and a half and 2% a year through the federal reimbursement. The state reimbursement hasn't increased in decades, but... We'll find a way. We always do. There are good things in here. We've learned the second year of a transition to a better chicken product. More bull, muscle, more white meat product than we had in the past. We're getting rid of Tyson, he's just, he's gotten very, very cheap. We're buying produce from a local farmer, Davey Farm, certainly in Florida. We're trying to do more with what we're doing.
So Al, we wanted to talk about the second column there. In the event that the federal government does come back and say, hey, we're going to persist and move forward. He's given us additional revenue projections.
Sure. The, if everyone is free, our federal reimbursement will practically triple. It'll go from 400,000 to 1.2 million considerably. Now that comes right down out of, saved out of the parents' pockets. It says they have the reimbursable meals where the parents pay me. Federal reimbursement is in the top case. And the state reimbursement goes up as well due to everyone being free, but most other things are the same. We're still selling snacks, we're going to try to increase it. We haven't served snacks in the elementary school most of the year just because we were serving in the classrooms and the gyms and you just couldn't do it. So there will be some increase hopefully in those lines. We will know more as we get into next year. Though Dr. Coats said about filling out applications, it's a nightmare to me. I do not foresee everyone filling them out in a timely manner. If New York State picks up everyone free, I don't know what they'll do. It's been rumored that the state is being approached to do this, but I don't know where they'll find them.
It's not currently in the executive or the legislative budget proposal for that.
It's been great to do this for the kids. They have responded and they're eating, like I said, we're serving 300 more kids a day than we ever have. Our highest numbers ever. They have responded. They've been eating and doing the right thing. It's an excellent thing. And we will get back to where we can and be self-sufficient. We will. The numbers will drive you crazy.
I was trying to figure it out, honestly.
That's okay.
So first, at lunch? Federal reimbursement is based on what? Is that based on just their, based on rates?
The federal government sets the rate. They got this on what they'll reimburse you this year.
On what they'll reimburse you this year. I'm assuming it's obviously not too excited.
No, no, no.
Any idea what it is?
Right now, in the pandemic world, it's over $4. Pre-pandemic, it's 329. Pre-pandemic, it's three twenty-nine for a pre-pandemic. Plus a little bit from the state, six cents, seven cents from the state. And they also give us.
Sorry, what's happening? So, have they reimbursed higher than?
Right now, it's very high.
What was it pre-pandemic?
It was low.
Like I said, we haven't raised the price since eighteen, nineteen. I don't remember the reimbursement rates that far back, so that's what we're treating. Because everyone was free, we just have to raise the price.
And remember, not everyone's free, some is only reduced, some are partial.
In addition, the surplus food is thirty-one cents a child for lunch. So, a hundred and twenty-three thousand is on top of the three twenty-six. And that's where, that's the figure, I hope it will go up two percent next year.
Okay.
I'm curious, is the cafeteria open, like for tenth period, like after school, especially at high school, for kids to go and purchase stuff?
No, we have vending machines, it costs more to have a person there.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's it?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just two other, two other items, and the board's already taken action on it just because we went to the new business items first. And just as a reminder, we will be placing before the voters a small capital improvement project at the annual budget of May. It primarily will include roofing upgrades, HVAC upgrades and Scotch now. If possible, if the bids allow, we'll move on to other buildings such as GIS to continue. Any roofing work we can do as we look to, as Mr. Free said, secure the envelopes of our buildings. Also, the creation of a new capital reserve, as will be thrown down the capital reserve that was created in two thousand and nineteen. When we have the opportunity for efficiency savings, we want to make sure that we have the permission of the community to save that money so that when we need to look forward to other work that we need to complete, that we do so in a responsible way, not asking the community to borrow when it's not necessary. The last piece I wanted to share, as you know, our core team came together to begin the strategic plan work. Mrs. Gore was very helpful in putting together a quick highlight video of the work that occurred this week. And I'm just going to ask Mrs. Farrell if she can put it on the screen behind us, Mr. Roman. It's a very short video.
On March sixteenth and seventeenth, the members of the district's strategic planning task force team gathered at the main street building to begin developing the goals and objectives of the district's strategic plan. Under the guidance of renowned facilitator and educator Judith Wilson, the task force team discussed the purpose behind the strategic plan, to examine what Goshen does well, to build upon its strengths, to envision what's possible, and to make that vision a reality for our students.
That's our job, our job to be current and today and move forward. So, we got to make some adjustments at this moment and we can't stop. We think that we are already today in March twenty-two and we're beyond that.
The members of the task force team worked together to examine the anonymous survey responses gathered from hundreds of district stakeholders.
Love the SEL programs for the kids, they really like the buildings and grounds. They love the after-school activities and the staff too. There needs to be more of a cohesiveness across schools for procedures. Think there's a need for more diversity of staff, more frequent communication, and in fact, that comes up with the goals too. I saw that come up a lot.
Strategic planning is a fluid, multi-year process that will allow the district to develop a mission, examine its core values and develop goals and action plans that will be pursued with passion, innovation and skill.
The world changes, culture changes, technology, yeah. But ideas evolve, the rules are simple and not, the rules are changing.
For more information about strategic planning, visit www.gcsny.org.
So, one of the most exciting parts of our strategic planning session was the opportunity of students. We had three parents participate, we had staff members from all over the district participating. We are hoping very soon to have a draft presentation ready to present to the board of education and look for ways to engage with the board to then take our goals and create action plans beyond that as well. As Christina said very well in the video, this is a fluid process before we get to a place where we have actionable steps to move forward with. We're very excited about the work that we started, but realize how much still is to be done. Without further ado, sir, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you.
Any questions for us, folks?
Thank you. Next agenda is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instructional Personnel and Technology, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Pucci, good evening, everyone. Just a couple of updates for you since our last meeting. I just wanted to say thank you to the high school staff, including Ms. Martin and her team, for having us up for the winter sports celebration at the JHS cafeteria. It was really nice to see our student athletes along with their coaches celebrating a few great seasons. Also, a big thank you to everyone involved in the CJ Hooker players, Peter Pan Junior performance. It's a great, exciting performance on Friday and Saturday evening over this past weekend. Kate Loftus did a wonderful job along with the stage crew, set design. But more importantly, it was absolutely wonderful to see our children perform. Such great energy, smiles, great songs, awesome dancing, all the above. Great time there. Science Olympiad, Goshen High School placed thirty-seventh during the state competition at LeMoyne. And I bring that up because it's, it's quite an improvement over the previous year's performance. So, they went from fifty-ninth to thirty-seventh, a very proud team and their hard work, certainly on the upswing with Science Olympiad at the high school level. Also, CJ Hooker placed first overall during the regional event and they will now be competing in the state tournament at East Syracuse-Minoah High School on April eighth and ninth. We've got four wonderful coaches that work really hard, like Nandando, Chrissy Go-Hookie, Roseanne Lesser, Christine Guerrier. And our students do a wonderful job of preparing, so congratulations to all of our Science Olympiad participants and best of luck as they move on to the state participation, or state competition. And finally, just another brief reminder that the grades three through eight computer-based testing in ELA will occur on March twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Makeups will run through April eighth thereafter. Just want to once again thank our faculty and staff members assisting our administrators with programming the Xterra system. And hopefully, this will be a successful testing session. And that's it for me this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Carter? Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Next study agenda, Freud's floor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is my first time, I don't really know how this works. I just wanted to kind of go back into the whole soul panel idea. This is what I do for a living, I've been doing it for about eight years. Mainly, we do school districts in New Jersey. There's a lot of ways to go about it. We've done one school district that we actually repaved their parking lot, if that would help out. So, all you have to do is ask questions. You don't have to use any of the fields for sports or anything like that. We're currently working on a school district in, by Trenton. We're doing their parking lots, we're installing lights, LED lights for safety. We're doing the high school and elementary school. I would suggest don't do it on your house. And if you're going to redefine print because it, I don't have it on mine and I've been doing it for a long time. But there's a lot of good things that come out of it. Obviously, it has to fit the school district, they will take your bills for the last twelve months. They'll see how much power you're pulling and how much power you're allowed to install, especially if you're considering any hybrid vehicles. It makes sense on a bigger scale, on something like a private home, it doesn't. But if you guys need any references or even, we've done the Kixi Schools also. They all came out pretty nice and it's all about how you negotiate that contract. You know, getting a free parking lot is something good and whatever else you can get out of them. So, I would definitely look into it, it's good stuff and it'll probably help with the bills and maybe some lunch money or something.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next agenda is board member issues or committee reports. And next is, I need a motion to go into executive session. Karen and Billy? A resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent not to reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history of a particular person or person, all in favor?